Good evening, each one. We welcome you out to our special meeting tonight. And we're glad that we can worship together this evening. We're glad for each one that's come. Welcome to our visitors as well, as we come to draw close to the Lord. And we're going to open our service tonight, and this, our theme is revival. And we're praying for the Lord's leading, and we're so glad you're here. 266, 266, as we open our time in prayer and in singing. Breathe on me breath of God, fill me with life anew. I invite you to stand as we sing 266. Good evening, each one. We welcome you out to our special meeting tonight. And we're glad that we can worship together this evening. We're glad for each one that's come. Welcome to our visitors as well, as we come to draw close to the Lord. And we're going to open our service tonight, and this, our theme is revival. And we're praying for the Lord's leading, and we're so glad you're here. 266, 266, as we open our time in prayer and in singing. Breathe on me breath of God, fill me with life anew. I invite you to stand as we sing 266. The ladies on verse three, ladies. You may be seated, and we're going to have an opening time of prayer. We'll come back as we sit here. But as we prepare her to meet the Lord tonight, we're going to ask Carol to open our time in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we can thank you, dear Lord, for your goodness to us. We thank you for this church, dear Lord. And we thank you, dear Lord, for the ability that we have to meet together, dear Lord, as so many that do not. But, dear Lord, we thank that you provided this for us. We thank you, dear Lord, for this meeting this evening, dear Lord, as we look at revival, dear Lord. And kindling, dear Lord, the flame back in our hearts, dear Lord. Sometimes it just gets too long, dear Lord. And we just, we thank you for the reminders to your word, dear Lord, that we are to be in your word, dear Lord, that we are to share you and share that wonderful gift of salvation, dear Lord. We just ask that you be with us this evening, dear Lord. To be here, dear Lord, brings us closer to you, dear Lord, and makes us more willing, dear Lord, to go in town. In this, we pray in your precious name, amen.
We're going to turn to number 857. 857, and this is the hymn, "I Love You, Lord." And as we sing this, we're going to sing it prayerfully through three times. 857, and we're inviting the Lord to begin to speak to our hearts tonight as we gather around this time of prayer, as we begin our service. Let's sing it through three times. Love the Lord, he is saints, for the Lord preserveth the faithful, Psalm 31:23. Father, we thank you tonight for the joy it is to come and lift up your name. We thank you, Father, for our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. For, Father, he has not only redeemed us, but he has caused us to have joy tonight. We pray, Father, as we gather, and we reflect on the theme of revival. And, Father, what there is, is so great in need as we have here tonight. We see our world, we see the country, your creation. We see ourselves in it, Lord, and there's a need to be on fire for thee. And, Father, we pray that as we hear your word tonight, that the Spirit of God would have just a working in our midst, that we have such a wonderful sense of thy presence. We have such a wonderful reminder of what you have accomplished for us, what you're doing and through us. And then, Father, we would be changed as a result of being here tonight. Lord, we thank you. Lord, we want to lift up your name. We want to praise you for who you are. And as the brothers and sisters in Christ, we gather together, and we would praise your name tonight, Father. Lord, we pray for those that may not know Jesus Christ is their personal Savior. And we know, Father, that we need to be saved. And so, Father, we pray for souls to be saved, and we thank you that that invitation is even available tonight to whosoever will turn from their sins and invite Christ into their hearts. And so, Father, we love you, and we lift up our voices to you, and we praise you for who you are and what you're doing. And we invite the Holy Spirit of God to be at work tonight in this special service as we gather together. Of course, in Jesus' name we pray and we ask, amen. We're going to invite you to take your hit psalm books again, and we're going to sing 256, 256. And we're inviting the Lord to work tonight, and this is a hymn that speaks of his power. We know there was power the day of Pentecost, but the Holy Spirit of God has changed. He's still powerful tonight. Let's stand together, 246, rather, I might have changed the number on you, 246. Now, as we come to verse four, it says, "Speak, Lord, before thy throne we wait, thy promise we believe, and we'll not let thee go until the blessing we receive." We sing hymns like "There Shall Be Showers of Blessings," and we come tonight expecting the Lord's blessing upon us, anticipating he has something very special for us. And so, we're inviting him to speak to our hearts by the Spirit of God, through the word of God, as he does tonight. Let's sing that fourth verse. Now, as we come to verse four, it says, "Speak, Lord, before thy throne we wait, thy promise we believe, and we'll not let thee go until the blessing we receive." We sing hymns like "There Shall Be Showers of Blessing," and we come tonight expecting the Lord's blessing upon us, anticipating he has something very special for us. And so, we're inviting him to speak to our hearts by the Spirit of God, through the word of God, as he does tonight. Let's sing that fourth verse. All God's people, you may be seated. Well, we're going to take a couple of your favorites tonight. If you have a favorite hymn, you can come through and pick a couple and sing them in our favorite section here tonight. You can just call out the number. Number 26, okay. We're going to sing the first and the third verse of 26, "Come Thou Fount." Another number. Oh, there's lots of numbers. All right, this side's on. 169, okay. And we'll come to the other side. That's what we like to hear, amen. 169, there's power in the blood. We better stand for this one, so we get the breath. Let's sing the first, the third, and the fourth. And if you have the energy, you can do five hours on the chorus. I might try it. Verse one, 169. When we get to the chorus, we'll sing a cappella, no instruments, just our noises and raise it up. Verse number four. Amen. You may be seated. 386. 386. Oh, we're going to sing that one later. Can you hang on for that one? All right, good. That's a good one.
840.
840, what a day that will be when my Jesus I will see. When Christ shall appear, then shall ye also appear with him in glory, what a day that will be.
Amen.
884.
884, whosoever means, we will stand for this one for our message, okay? Amen, amen. You may be seated. Thank you, ladies. We're going to come back to a time of singing in a little while. It's wonderful to be able to lift up our voices to the Lord, give him praise and thanks. We have sung a number of hymns that has desired to do that tonight. And there's been songs that have been sung in the heart tonight to the Lord as well. And so, we are joyful for what he's doing. The scripture says in Psalm 85, in verse 6, "Wilt thou not revive us again, that thy people may rejoice in thee?" "Wilt thou not revive us again, that thy people may rejoice in thee?" We know that David, after he had sinned, he came before the Lord, and he cried out again in Psalm 51 and said, "Create in me a clean heart, O God, and renew a right spirit within thee." "Create in me a clean heart, O God, and renew a right spirit within thee." Let's bow before the Lord, Father, again, and thank you for this time we can gather and for the hymns that have been sung and for the praise that has been offered and the worship that has been lifted up to thee. We thank you for your word. We pray that you would speak to us by thy Spirit. We're praying, Father, for revival. We're praying, Father, for the Spirit of God's working in our midst tonight, and we thank you that he is working already. And, Father, that he's wanting to speak to each and every one of us, and we would be drawn closer to thee. Lord, we know that he has a purpose and plan for us here tonight, and we just seek to fulfill that for your honor and for your glory. Father, we pray that you would suit a blessing to each need. We pray for those that aren't here that wish they could be here tonight, Lord. There are some that could not come. And we pray that you would bless them where they are. Father, we thank you for those that are tuning in online, and we pray, Father, that you would bless them. And that, Father, you would suit a blessing to meet their need. We thank you for the showers of blessings. We have rain that was falling before we came in tonight. Father, we're reminded of the showers that do fall upon our lives, the blessings that come. So, Lord, we thank you, in Jesus' name, amen. There have been a number and a number of what was called revivals since the time of the day of Pentecost. And there were times in the mid-century from that time, 1700 to 1600, where there was different times where the Spirit of God just had a real working among individuals. And so, the Lord laid upon the hearts of preachers to open the word of God. And in the 1700s, there was individuals like Jonathan Edwards and others who preached the gospel, and souls were saved. And that was called the first great awakening at that time. And there was another, they called it the second great awakening in the States in the 1800s, where there was thousands of individuals saved as a result of the preaching of the word of God. There was another time called the prayer-meeting revival, the prayer-meeting revival in the mid-1800s. The prayer-meeting revival in the mid-eighteen hundreds. And that just kinda spread and there was a, there was a call to prayer and there was a, there was a burden to get things right with the Lord. And there were a number of souls saved, a number of Christians encouraged and strengthened in the things of the Lord. In the early nineteen hundreds, there was the Welsh revivals and others where there were thousands coming to Christ. There have been other revivals that perhaps aren't chronicized, but we know that the Holy Spirit has worked in different times, in different ways. I remember driving a lady to Cape Breton. Actually, told us of the great revival of the marguerite. And the marguerite forks in different areas up there in Cape Breton in the nineteen hundreds. And just how the Lord had a great working and as individuals were getting right with God and souls were being saved and there was a real burden for the things of the Lord. There's a, we could talk of revival in the modern day, today's day. There are numbers of souls being saved in China and other places in the world today. Thousands and thousands. When we talk about the underground church, the church that isn't able to hate publicly like we are, talk about revival. Many times it can come as a result of persecution that revival can come. One said this about revival. "The need for revival in our day is too obvious to be denied. And there are many burdened hearts among Christians everywhere about spiritual conditions. There is a genuine concern about the apathy and worldliness and resulted lack of effectiveness in our testimony." He said, "Some mourn the quality of worship and teaching among us. Others are more occupied with the lack of bold and biblical preaching of the gospel and clarity, conviction, and power, and lack of genuine conversions proved by radically changed lives." Is there a need for revival? Absolutely. But revival is more than just an emotional experience of some kind or some kind of spiritual high. Revival is a renewal. And it is alight to King David when he called unto the Lord and he said in that verse, "Create in me a clean heart, O God, and renew a right spirit within me." And what I'm praying for these meetings is that there would be a renewed mind with the people of God, that there would be a renewed mind. I'm not suggesting that we're a church of apathy or a church of little concern for the Scriptures, for the gospel, but that we would have a renewed thinking. That, yes, it has been a year and a half of great distraction from what the Lord has called us to and the calling and the purpose of the local church. And there have been many blessings that have come in the past year and a half. But there have been many opportunities to be tempted, to be discouraged. And I believe there are many Christians that have been discouraged. And it may be God's will to take these meetings and however long the Lord would have us have these on Wednesday night, but take them and cause a real spiritual awakening in our hearts, a reviving, a renewing. And so, that we would come and we would invite you to do that. And as we open the Word of God, I would invite you to invite the Spirit of God to speak to your heart. And we know that the Spirit of God speaks in accordance with the Word of God. So we invite the Spirit of God to continue to work tonight. As I invite you to take your Bibles and turn with me, please, to the book of Ezra, chapter nine. Ezra, chapter nine. When revival comes is the theme of our meetings. And we find times of revival in the Old Testament. As God spoke to the hearts of individuals and people. And even at times, the whole nation of Israel was turned back to the Lord. And we have the books of Ezra and Nehemiah and the Old Testament scriptures which record for us the revival that came as they came back into the land after the seventy-year captivity, as they rebuilt the wall of Jerusalem, as they were re-establishing order and re-establishing worship. And as Ezra calls unto the Lord for revival, I'd like you to notice part of his prayer with me. And we're gonna read into chapter nine down to verse number ten. And he says this. "Now, when these things were done, the princes came to me, saying, 'The people of Israel and the priests and the Levites have not separated themselves from the people of the lands, doing according to their abominations; even of the Canaanites and the Hittites, the Perizzites and the Jebusites, the Amorites and the Moabites, the Egyptians and the Amorites; for they have taken of their daughters for themselves and for their sons, that the holy seed have mingled themselves with the people of those lands; yea, the hand of the princes and rulers hath been chief in this trespass.' And when I heard this thing, I rent my garment and my mantle and plucked off the hair of my head and of my beard, and sat down stony. And there assembled unto me everyone that trembled at the words of the God of Israel, because of the transgression of those that had been carried away. And I sat stony until the evening sacrifice. And at the evening sacrifice, I arose up from my heaviness. And having rent my garment and my mantle, I fell upon my knees and spread out my hands unto the Lord, my God, and said, 'O my God, I am ashamed and blushed to lift up my face to thee, my God; for our iniquities are increased over our heads, and our trespasses grown up unto the heavens.' Since the days of our fathers, we have been in great trespass unto this day. For our iniquities, we have, our kings and our priests have delivered into the hand of the kings of the lands, to the spoil, to the captivity, and to the sword, to the captivity, and to the spoil, and to confusion of faith, as it is this day." Notice verse eight. "And now, for a little space, grace hath been shown from the Lord our God, to leave us a remnant to escape, and to give us a nail in this holy place, that our God might lighten our eyes, and give us a little reviving in our bondage. For we were bondmen, yet our God had not forsaken us in our bondage, but hath extended mercy unto us in the sight of the kings of Persia, to give us a reviving, to set up the house of our God, and to repair the desolations thereof, and to give us a wall in Judea and Jerusalem. And now, our God, what shall we say after this? For we have forsaken thy commandments.'" May the Lord have a blessing and reading in his word. Yes, there was a time of reviving as they came back to Jerusalem. But Israel had forgotten the commands of the Scripture. And Ezra is broken up over the sin that still remained. He was broken up. And he gathers together those that tremble at the words of God, at the Word of God. And he cries unto the Lord in verse six and says, "Oh, my God, I am ashamed and blushed to lift up my face to thee, my God; for our iniquities are increased over our head, and our trespasses grown up unto the heavens." Ezra was broken before the Lord. And as I was thinking about that, I wonder when the last time it was that we were broken up over the sin in our life? When we were broken up over the sin in our hearts? And Ezra is an example to each and every one of us. What to do in an hour of need? He prayed. His prayer was one of a broken heart. His prayer was one of humility as he comes before the Lord. He spread out my hands and I said unto the Lord, my God. And his prayer was one of complete honesty as he just poured out his heart to God. And not only his sin, but the sin of the people that they were in. And Ezra prayed in verse eight. And as he looked at the remnants of the Lord that the Lord had left, he praised this in verse eight. He said, "Lord, you have left us a remnant to escape and to give us a nail for this holy place, that our God might lighten our eyes and give us a little reviving in our bondage." And you know, the Holy Spirit of God really spoke to my heart in that verse. What would it take for the Lord to lighten our eyes and give us a bit of reviving? To lighten our eyes and give us a bit of reviving? It's gonna take brokenness. It's gonna take humility. And it's gonna take honesty for the Lord. You know, one of the great, great problems of the church today is that we can come out and we can put on our best face. We can sit in the meeting. And the last thing we might want our brother or sister to the left or to the right knowing is that we're going through a hard time. Or that the Holy Spirit of God is working in our hearts. Or that we're broken before God. And you know, those are parts that the Lord wants to break. He wants us to just be real before Him. And I'm praying tonight that the Spirit of God would speak to the brokenhearted. And I'm praying what this verse says. "Lord, that you might lighten our eyes and give us a little reviving. That you might lighten our eyes and give us a little reviving." Do you know what kind of sacrifice we can make to the Lord tonight? Notice what Psalm fifty-one and verse seven says. Psalm fifty-one and verse seven. Oh, verse seventeen, rather. He says this, and this again is the prayer of David in his repentant heart before the Lord. He says, "The sacrifices of God are a broken spirit. A broken and contrite heart, O God, thou wilt not despise. Do good in thy good pleasure on the Zion, and build thou the walls of Jerusalem; then thou shalt be pleased with the sacrifices of righteousness with burnt offerings, and hold burnt offering; and then shall they offer bullocks upon thy altar." But he says that "the sacrifices of God are of a broken spirit, a broken and contrite heart, O God, thou wilt not despise." And you know, the Lord tonight is very concerned about broken hearts. And he loves to see individuals that come broken before Him because he's the one that puts us back together. He's the one that could, yes, we can be broken apart, but he can take all the pieces of our life and put them back together for his work. He's so pleased to see those that will come broken. And may it be that we would come broken before the Lord like the prophet Jonah. And he thought that he could just run from the presence of God. And he did try to do that, to flee from God's will and God's way. He was the preacher. Imagine the preacher trying to run from what God had. And he was called to preach to the Ninevites, a great wicked city that they were full of all kinds of idol worship and they were vicious people. And Jonah said, "No, I'm gonna flee from your presence, Lord. I'm not going to do that." But you know, he had to be broken too, Jonah. And it took the veil, the belly of the whale to break Jonah. And Jonah said this in his prayer to the Lord. "When my soul fainted within me, I remembered the Lord, and my prayer came in unto thee into thy holy temple; when my soul fainted within me." May it be that we would be broken like Jonah. But what if we would be broken like the prodigal son? The Lord Jesus spoke in Luke, Luke's Gospel, chapter fifteen and verse seventeen of the prodigal son. And he was, he had desired that he was gonna take his inheritance, he was gonna go. In Luke chapter fifteen, it says in verse number seventeen. "He went and wasted all that he had. He had nothing left." And it says in verse seventeen, "And when he came to himself, he said, 'How many hired servants and my father have rent enough him to spare? And I perish with hunger. I will arise and go to my father, and will say unto him, 'Father, I have sinned against heaven and before thee, and am no more worthy. Be called thy son, make me as one of thy hired servants.'" Was this boy broken? Absolutely, he was. "When he came to himself..." You know, many times we go through life and we need to find ourselves. And when we find ourselves, it's as if we step out and we look at ourselves and we find, you know, we're broken in so many ways. And we may have been trying to live for ourselves. We may have been trying to live life without God, even as a Christian. The Lord wants to challenge us and get things made right. And what kind of a heavenly Father do we serve? One just like this Father, as he said in verse number twenty. "And he arose and came to his father; but when he saw him, he greatly lay off. His father saw him, and had compassion, ran, and fell on his neck and kissed him. And the son said unto him, 'Father, I have sinned against heaven and in thy sight, and am no more worthy. Be called thy son.'" "The father said unto the servants, 'Bring forth the best robe, and put it on him, and put a ring in his hand, and shoes in his feet, and bring him to the fatted calf, and kill it, and let us eat and be merry; for this my son was dead, and is alive again. He was lost in his town, and they began to be merry.'" And that's the kind of heavenly Father we serve today. One who, he wants to revive us, one who invites us to come broken. And he follows on us and he kisses us. He has compassion and love. And he rejoices that things are made right. And so, while we are here as believers, there's an opportunity for things to be made right. May it be we would be broken like the prodigal son, like the prophet Jonah. But what about the woman in Luke chapter seven? Who is broken over her sin? And it says in verse thirty-seven, "And behold, a woman in the city, which was a sinner, when she knew that Jesus sat at me in the Pharisee's house, brought an alabaster box of ointment, and stooped at his feet behind him, weeping, and began to wash his feet with her tears, and did wipe them with the hairs of her head. And she kissed his feet and anointed them with the ointment." Was she broken? Absolutely, she was broken. She was broken over her life. She was broken over the sin of her life. She was broken over the decisions and choices that she had made. But she heard one called Jesus, who could forgive. And the Pharisees scoffed at the Lord Jesus for having heard even in his presence. And the Lord Jesus speaks to them and rebukes them. He says, "This woman hath anointed me, hath anointed my feet with ointment. He says, 'This woman, since the time I came in, hath not ceased to kiss my feet. She has washed my feet with tears and wiped them with the hairs of her head.'" And he says to her in verse number fifty, in verse forty-eight, "And said unto her, 'Thy sins are forgiven.' And they that sat at me with him began saying within themselves, 'Who is this that forgives sins also?' And he said unto the woman, 'Thy faith has saved thee. Go in peace.'" And she, she came to Jesus broken, and she left the Lord Jesus with peace in her heart and forgiveness and so. She came broken. Oh, that the Lord would lighten our eyes and give us a bit of reviving. And I believe the Holy Spirit of God wants to work tonight. And it can begin by just helping us to realize that, you know what, it's okay for broken. Because the Lord wants to put us back together. The Lord wants to take those broken hearts. He loves to see a broken and a contract spirit coming for me. Well, then we ask the question, what about revival? What does it look like? And I wanna just point out a few things here. Titus, chapter three. What does revival look like? Revival, we can say, first of all, is founded in the cross. Revival is founded in the cross. In verse number five, "Not by works of righteousness which we have done, but according to his mercy saved us by the washing of regeneration and renewing of the Holy Ghost, which he said on us abundantly through Jesus Christ our Savior." I say revival is founded in the cross. And we're talking about salvation and regeneration and renewing of the Holy Ghost. It speaks of in this passage. There's a call, there's a need to be born again by the Spirit of God. The Bible teaches us, yes, we were dead in trespasses and in sins. And as we were dead in trespasses and in sins, we were not in need of revival at that moment. We were in need of regeneration. We were in need of regeneration. And when God breathed life into that which was dead, that which we could not help ourselves, we were lost. But through his mercy, he saved us by the washing of regeneration. And when that moment happened in each of our lives, I trust this one year tonight can say, yes, there was a time in my life I invited Christ into my heart. I believed I was a sinner as the Word of God teaches. And that Jesus died on the cross for my sins, and I by faith invited him in. That's regeneration. And that's a work of the Holy Spirit of God. That's a miracle that happens instantly and for all of eternity. We can never lose that. But then when we talk about revival, that's verses believer says, as we need to be stirred up in the things of the Lord. Regeneration happens once because we have come broken in our sins to the foot of the cross to receive Christ as our Savior. He died for each and every one of us. He died so that we could have our sins forgiven. He died so that we could be spared the devil's hell, where the Bible says, "The fire is not quenched." And we cannot experience true revival in our hearts if we've never been regenerated by the Holy Spirit of God. And so, tonight might be the night he's calling you to be regenerated, to be saved, to be forgiven, find forgiveness of sins. Do you know, the devil is doing his very best today to deceive and trying to think that if we can just get into some kind of an emotional state, then that's spirituality. It doesn't have to have the Bible. It doesn't have to have the truth of God's word. We just have to come into some kind of emotional high of some kind. And you know, Satan is very crafty. And we need spiritual discernment. And so, apart from the gospel message, there cannot be true revival, there cannot be salvation. But then, as Christians, we need to continually come to be strengthened in the things of the Lord. we need to continually, continually come to be strengthened in the things of the Lord. Revival is founded in the cross, because we would not be able to experience the joys of the Lord, if it was not because he went to the cross and wore our sin. But revival is needed for each and every Christian. It's not just for some Christians and/or not for other Christians. Revival, God desires for every Christian to be revived. And it tells us in the book of James that we're to be doers of the word and not only hearers, because we can deceive ourselves. And that's very crafty. Satan is very crafty. He wants us to be deceived and thinking, if we just hear God's word, if we just take in some of God's teaching from the word of God, that's enough. And we can be deceived. We can miss out on the blessings and the joy that the Lord has for us and the reviving he wants us to have in our hearts, because we have failed to do just what it calls us to in Hebrews, or in James, chapter two, or James, chapter one and verse 22. "But be ye doers of the word, and not hearers only, deceiving your own selves." "But whoso looketh into the perfect law of liberty," verse 25, "and continueth therein, he being not forgetful here, but a doer of the word, this man, somebody blessed in his deed." But a doer of the word. It's possible to deceive ourselves. And we cannot separate revival and the word of God. They go one and the other together. Why? Because the word of God is a living book. The word of God is a living word and desires to speak to our hearts. We sang that hymn earlier. "Proned to wander, Lord, I fear; prone to leave, and what I fear." And you know, that's the heartbeat of every Christian. We're prone to wander from the things of the Lord. "Here's my heart untaken, seal it, seal it for thy courts above." What else about revival? Revival is spiritual work that is enabled by spiritual power. It's spiritual work that's enabled by spiritual power. Ephesians, chapter four. He says this in verse 17. "This I say therefore, and testify in the Lord, that he henceforth walked out as other Gentiles walk in the vanity of their minds, having the understanding darkened, alienated from the life of God through the ignorance that is in them because of their blindness of their heart, who being fast feeling, have given themselves over to lasciviousness, to work all uncleanness with greediness; but ye have not so learned Christ. If so be, ye have learned, heard him, and have been taught by him, as the truth is in Jesus, that ye put off concerning the former conversation, the old man, which is corrupt according to the deceitful us, and be renewed in the spirit of your mind; and that ye put on the new man, which after God is created in righteousness and true holiness." You find the word renewing there. We talk about revival, we're talking about renewing. And what are we looking to renew? We're looking to renew our mind, the spirit of our mind. We're allowing, inviting the Lord to, to speak to our hearts, to speak to our minds. And it's a spiritual work that needs to be enabled by spiritual power. It cannot be done in our own strength. And we're inviting the Lord to lighten our eyes and give us a bit of reviving tonight, and be renewed in the spirit of your mind. What does he want us to do in verse number 22? That ye put off the, put off the former conversation, the old man, which is corrupt according to the deceitful us. The former life. Do you know what happens when you leave your sandwich in your lunchbox on the last day of school in June? On the first day of school in September, you come to your lunchbox and you go to open it up. I know how it happens, because I did that. I knew the whole summer I didn't. I was just waiting for a mom to find it. The old lunchbox had to be thrown away. Couldn't wash it. Tried to. The old man. The old man, which is corrupt according to the deceitful us. And you know, it is only by the supernatural power of the Holy Spirit of God that the Lord can take us and he can wash us, so that we don't have even the, the smell of sin anymore, as it were. That, that he can cause us to be renewed in our thinking. And it needs to be a continual renewing, because yes, we're gonna be prone to wander, prone to go back into fields of sin, because we're gonna struggle with it each and every day of our lives. But he says that "ye put on the new man, which after God is created in righteousness and true holiness." And there's a drastic, crisp difference between a Christian who wants to live in righteousness and true holiness and a Christian who is allowing himself to be driven with the wind and tossed and carried about and troubled. And the devil is taking advantage of them in every corner. Revival is a supernatural work. It's a spiritual work enabled by a spiritual power, and that is very God himself. And may we not be confused of what power, who, what, what kind of power this is. This is the Holy Spirit of God that we put on the new man. And the Lord wants to help us do that. You know, we're gonna face challenges and temptations, and yes, we're gonna have difficulties, but he wants to help us. He wants us to depend upon him as our heavenly Father and, and his power, that we would live for the potential that the Lord wants for us here in this life, that we put on the new man, which is created in righteousness and true holiness. And part of the brokenness that we might have tonight is knowing that we have failed the Lord so many times to do just that. Put on the new man. How many days and hours have we been keeping the old man on? Revival is needed. It's a, it's a spiritual work and it's a spiritual power that's needed, as the Spirit of God works. But it's also needed so that we can be built up, that we can be rooted and built up in him, as it tells us in Colossians, chapter two, verses 6 to 8. That we can be established in the faith, that we can be growing. Colossians two and says in verse seven, "Rubbed and built up in him, established in the faith, and as you have been taught abounding there in the thanksgiving." You know, a Christian that is walking in the Lord Jesus Christ, in, in his path, who is rooted in his word, who is desired to be taught by the word of God, who is desired to be grounded in the truth, established in the faith, is gonna result in someone who's gonna be abounding in thanksgiving toward God. It's gonna result in a revival, a sprain up of well in our hearts to the Lord. And that's what he wants for each and every one of us tonight. So as we think about revival, Jesus wants to lighten our eyes and allow us to have a little revival. And so we're gonna sing together. Let's take our songbooks. It's gonna be number 386. You picked a good hymn, John, because it's revival again. Hallelujah, thy glory. Hallelujah, amen. We praise the old God. 386. We're gonna stand, we're gonna sing this hymn, and we're gonna have a seat and have a word of prayer on another hymn. We're gonna invite the Lord to continue the work in our hearts, as we sing. Sing it out. We're inviting the Lord to continue the work. Pray for revival.
We pray thee, O God, for the spirit of God, for thee hast given, and is now our reward. Hallelujah, thy glory. Hallelujah, amen. Hallelujah, thy glory, revival again. We pray thee, O God, for thy spirit is light, who has shown us the light, and who has gathered our light. Hallelujah, thy glory. Hallelujah, amen. Hallelujah, thy glory, revival again.
Sing the third verse without the instruments, just our voices. Verse three.
All glory and praise to the lamb that was slain, who has won us in the past and every shame. Hallelujah, thy glory. Hallelujah, amen. Hallelujah, thy glory, revival again.
Verse four with the instrument.
Revival again, with thy light. May so be written, with thy love. Hallelujah, thy glory. Hallelujah, amen. Hallelujah, thy glory, revival again.
Sing the chorus over, get the chords.
Hallelujah, thy glory. Hallelujah, amen. Hallelujah, thy glory, revival again.
And you may be seated in this, we just come before the Lord in a word prayer. Our heavenly Father, what a privilege it's been to be here tonight. Father, we've looked at your word and we've seen individuals who came broken before you, Lord. Broken in their sin. Broken in their selfishness. Broken in their pride. And Lord, we thank you that you invited them in. And you come, that you're so gracious, that you're so loving, that you're so kind. And that you want to bring some light to our eyes and give us a bit of reviving. And we're thankful for that bit of reviving that we received tonight, and Lord, may it be that it was more than a bit, because the Spirit of God is working. And we're just thankful that you're well at work, that you're able, and that you're powerful. And Father, we pray, whatever the need is tonight, whether it's the need for salvation, that that individual would come to receive Christ as Savior. If it's a need, Lord, as we're praying for revival in our hearts, to be stirred up in the things of the Lord, Father, may your will be done. May we be willing to come as we respond on this invitation hymn tonight. And we'll just thank you forward in Jesus' name. Amen. We're gonna invite you to take your songbooks. We're gonna close with hymn number 542. 542, and I want to thank you for coming tonight. And if the Lord has spoken in your heart, then we praise the Lord with you, and we trust that even as we sing this invitation hymn, that the Spirit of God is continuing to work in your heart, you just take a moment and deal with the Lord right where you are. We'll stop, we have time, and we'll stop, and we'll have a moment of prayer together. There just might be an area where the Lord is speaking in your heart. This is the time to respond, who's leaving. So let's prayerfully sing this. 542. We can see it as we sing.
I have wasted precious years, now I'm coming home. Thy strength will do my work restore. Lord, I'm coming home. Coming home, coming home, never want to roam. Oh, the lamb thy ones of all, Lord, I'm coming home. I have wasted many precious years, now I'm coming home. Thy now, present, with tears, tears, oh, I'm coming home. Coming home, coming home, never want to roam. Oh, the lamb thy ones of all, Lord, I'm coming home.
The white lady needs to play through as we just bow our heads before the Lord tonight. I don't have public invitations where I pull people to the front. I believe the Spirit of God can work in your seat just where you are. I'm not gonna embarrass you, but if the Spirit of God has spoken in your heart tonight, you can speak to him just right now, come before the Lord, get things made right. Maybe it's an opportunity to thank him for the reviving he's brought to your soul tonight. Maybe it's a joy to say, "Lord, thank you for saving me." Thank you for, you're gonna be a church man. Thank you for your work. And I'll let the ladies play through another verse of this, and let's just continue in prayer before them. And let's stand as we sing that fourth verse and close our meeting together.
My soul is still, my heart is sore. Now I'm coming home. Thy strength will do my work restore. Lord, I'm coming home. Coming home, coming home, never want to roam. Oh, the lamb thy ones of all, Lord, I'm coming home.
Sing the chorus again, just our voices on the chorus only.
Coming home, coming home, never want to roam. Oh, the lamb thy ones of all, Lord, I'm coming home.